For a special work session this evening. Do you want to do a real call, please?
Ray Moller?
Present.
Counselor Gerson? Counselor Nash?
Here.
Counselor Tress?
Here.
Counselor Goble?
Here.
Was he gonna be here?
He is, he's online.
Okay.
He was on.
I said I was here.
No, he is on. Oh.
Here.
Try that, yeah. Give that a shot. That's not on my cheat sheet, so.
I'll try it.
Counselor Goble?
Here for the third time.
Thank you. Counselor Gorley?
Here.
And Counselor Coleman?
Present.
Let the record show that I have seven present and no absent. We're here this evening for service development fees review.
Good evening. We asked to have a work session to discuss trying to get taller than for you. To discuss the SDCs, system development charges. We had talked about trying to demonstrate what it might look like with a phased approach. And you also had questions about the makeup of the SDCs percentage wise.
Where's Brandon when you need him? Hey Ray, do we have a visitor online? Do we want to recognize who that is?
I believe we have Austin online, is that correct?
Yes.
So we have Austin, who's with Murray Smith, our consultants. So to get a answers that you asked for, we have a quite that the only way we can really do it was show you the percentage of the makeup for the SDCs. So you can see that the transport of the total SDC amount, no matter what that dollar amount is, the percentage would be basically 21 and a half percent to transportation, about 11 percent to parks, about seven and a quarter percent to storm water. Water would be 27, about 27 and a half percent and the remainder would go to the wastewater. Let's not show enough of this.
Mr. Mayor, Ray, could we get a copy of this before, at some point? Before next council meeting? Okay, thanks. Okay.
So if you, this kind of gives you an idea, so for every hundred dollars, you know, you can figure out what the percentage would be.
And what determines how that breakup is made up?
So that's, we'll, we'll talk about that. I think Austin, will you go into that here shortly? Into the
I can't see the wastewater number.
Twenty three something.
I'm not sure why it's not showing up. Great this afternoon.
It shows muted for him.
He's got himself here.
It's okay. Yeah.
So that this, I think when you, I was absent for the meeting that you had with the consultants, but I think they explained that methodology at that point in time.
Cool.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sound right? So utilizing that methodology, this is the percentage that it came out with. Does that help? Kind of?
I need your fresh.
So then what we do is we'll move on. There we go. So now what we can do is demonstrate to you where through this, I can change the numbers and you can see how it would go year by year. So right now you see over here on the left is all of our comparable cities that we've been utilizing. So you have Sheridan, Monmouth, Stateon, Independence. This is the average. Silverton, Malala. This is our current SDCs that you can see, much lower. And this is the number that, I can't make it any bigger.
Okay.
Sorry. To get it all in there, that's
Okay, that's good.
I'll see if I can make that bigger. No.
It's okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, it's okay.
This is what the num, the recommended number is looking like. And then here is where you'll see this one adjusts as we play with numbers over timeframes and years. And what you'll see is the current number plus the difference between this line and here divided by the number of years. And that would give you, to give you an idea of what the buildup would look like for each year. So for instance, what we said is, well, what if we spread that increase out over four years? You can see what that would jump up to, so, so at year one. Year one it would jump up to over fifty eight hundred dollars. Five thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. So that's, again, the difference between, between the recommended number and the current divided by four years. And then added that together would be, that would give you year two. Maybe? So year two it would increase an additional four thousand twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
So it would go up to about ten thousand, the second year.
Ninety-nine point two, yeah.
Yeah, it would be fifty-eight hundred plus four thousand, yeah. So at the end of year two, they would be about ten thousand. The thing is, this does not account for an escalator. So generally speaking, the recommendation has been to build it so that it automatically includes like a CPI in that. This would not include that escalator, it would just be at this point in time, dollar value. And then year three would be an additional four thousand twenty-two dollars. And then of course, year four would be an additional four thousand and twenty-two dollars to get to that estimated amount.
So the fourth year is eighteen thousand straight?
I'm sorry?
Is it eighteen thousand dollars at the fourth year?
That would be rounded it off.
Seventeen thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars.
Okay.
Now if you wanted to break that into five years.
I don't want to.
Your first year would go to, I believe, five thousand eighty dollars and twenty cents. And then you would add four more years of three thousand two hundred eighteen dollars twenty cents. Do you want to see any other, kind of, want to be if we did it over three years or six years?
No.
So we did comparators, you know, we've utilized cities of like size within our same region and similar, fairly similar budgets. This one over here is communities in our area more so regardless of population. So Brownsville is currently charging just over ten thousand. Lebanon a little more, Albany a little more. The average is sixteen thousand four hundred fifty dollars twenty-four cents. And their village just shy of twenty thousand, Corvallis, closer to twenty thousand. And Felonith is twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars in their SDC charges. And here you can see the kind of mix that
Go ahead.
So, wait, wait, these are current SDCs for these cities?
Correct. These are current SDCs.
So. Okay.
I will have, well, we will figure out next week somehow to get all this in a spreadsheet. I might ask Trish to help and make it sound so it's tangible that you can put in front of you. And actually see those numbers.
So what's some of the counselors' thoughts? You want four years or five years? Maybe it'll help city.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm for four years. I don't want to go any longer than that.
I'm okay with four years. I was a little concerned and I didn't know if you guys had voted on the amount. I'm concerned that we want to encourage people to build in St. John's and I know that that's an average or it's actually above the average. I was thinking more around a fifteen mark instead of closer to the eighteen mark. But I'm, I'm better with four years, for sure.
I'm kind of with Susan. I was not looking at going to seventeen thousand at all. I was thinking we were, we were looking at a different total over a five-year period. That's kind of what we talked about. So I'm not comfortable personally to be in that higher end of that. We talked about being a little bit more towards the lower end, at least at this point. That's how I feel about it.
Calvin, that?
I'm fine with dropping it down just a little bit too, but I think it's kind of like a Band-Aid. We should just get it done and over with and
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that the first year number is too low. I, I think we should go higher than that. I mean, we've been so low since, it seems to me like that we, and I know that's a big jump, but still.
I know that everybody was saying for four years, and I was kind of doing some quick math, but I mean, I mean, I'm off on my numbers a little bit because I was trying to quick math here, but if you spread it out in five years, the first year jumped, I'm just quick rounding rough numbers. First year do five thousand, second year do eighty-five hundred, third year do eleven-five, fourth year, and I agreed with what you were saying, doing fourteen-five or right, right in there. And then the fifth year, on the fifth year, be up around the seventeen.
So you're saying smaller increases for the first four and then year five?
Get up to the seventeen.
Can you share those numbers with me one more time?
That was just quick, quick math there, Ray, but like first year five thousand, second year eighty-five hundred, third year eleven-five, fourth year fourteen-five, and then fifth year seventeen-five. But I haven't heard from Counselor Goble or Counselor Gorley and their thoughts, but that was kind of my thought. I kind of agree within four years, I don't think we want to be totally up to the seventeen. I think that's a little bit aggressive. But on the fifth year maybe, we could be up close to that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, I'm kind of on the you know, when we went out for the police levy, we went pretty hard right off the bat and that was a really a good thing. But I, I think that we've been so far behind that I would hate to see us go five years. And I would like to see us start higher than five thousand, fifty-eight hundred dollars. I think that number should be increased and I think it should go up a reasonable amount after that. But we, we, we're kind of stuck in a mess here because we, we need we need the, the money to, to help us get to where we need to be. And it, I know it's, I know it's a tough deal, but my goodness.
I think
We've been giving this stuff away.
One way, I agree with you, Counselor Tress, but on the second, we, right now we're about, what is it, two thousand? Or ballpark. You jump up too high in the first year and you're going to have people scratching their heads saying, what the heck is the city doing? You don't want too drastic of a jump is my concern.
Well, I would be, I would be halfway between there and ten thousand. I definitely would be there. I, I just think that we we have to get going. That's just, that's my opinion and
But what I would share with, with you is the market drives the price for housing. People pay what they're going to pay. The question is, how much are you going to let developers and builders profit? And that's really what that, what you're going to be cutting. Are you going to see prices go a little bit? It might go up a little bit. Realize these builders are paying these other numbers at other places and they're still building. So the, the market is going to drive that top end, that price, for the most part. And it's a matter of your, how much of the profits are you essentially going to share with that developer and that builder?
So another, another set number you could look at, if you were to kind of say what Counselor Tress says, start out seventy-five hundred, go to ten thousand second year, twelve-five for third year, fifteen thousand for fourth year, and then seventeen-five on your fifth year. You're still jumping a little higher. And then doing more of a two thousand to twenty-five increments in the four year.
What was your fourth number on there after twelve-five?
Fifteen.
Mr. Mayor, I, I thought you read my paper. I wrote these numbers down too, so.
Yeah. And then seventeen-five would be the fifth year. And then we'd probably have to revisit.
Again, understanding whether you decide to put in an escalator or not. So it might be seventy-five the first year, it could be ten K plus CPI or whatever escalator we charge a parent, just so they're clear on that, if you choose the escalator or not. Yeah, again, we'll do whatever
Counselor Goble, your thoughts? You still with us, Counselor Goble? Okay, your thoughts?
Well, I think that the numbers are seriously affected by having Felonith in there. And if we could see their, say Albany, Lebanon, Brownsville's five-year plan, where are they going? What are they escalating at? Where are they going to be in five years? We need that data. But if you take Felonith out of the picture, that seriously changes the average. I don't understand how we could justify higher than Albany or Lebanon at any point. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So if we looked at their five-year plan though, I mean, that might know where they're going and what's happening with them and be able to use that as an indicator. But going up, I think if you took Felonith out of the picture, you can see a little, a different number. And I know you will. And so that's where I'm at. I, I can't support anything higher than what Lebanon or Albany are doing without those numbers.
The top, yeah, the top mon, the top number, I don't have a problem with being lower. I don't have a problem with that.
What was Lebanon's?
But you also have to remember that Lebanon has went crazy on their stuff. So their numbers, their numbers would, might, might not be accurate for us to, to deal with because if you go to Lebanon, they are building stuff on every place that they've got a lot to build on. Everywhere.
Is eleven thousand nine dollars.
But when you consider all the stuff that they're getting their money from, it's got to be a pretty significant number compared to what we'll be getting. That would be my, my only problem with that.
And it's always going to be that way. It is always, no matter a hundred years from now, Lebanon is going to be a bigger community than what we've got. And Albany should be bigger than what we've got as well. So, but we shouldn't ask for more than they do. It just makes sense.
So if you go back to that, I'm, I'm just throwing this out, go back to that five, eighty-five hundred, eleven-five, and then fourteen after four, you're, you're still within the ballpark of what Lebanon's because in four years, I doubt Lebanon will be eleven thousand nine.
Yeah. And remember, they have more expenses places to put that money because they have higher
Is there rocks included in that?
Mile for mile, our water treatment has to go way out farther, our water works, but
Are there parks included in that? I don't recall.
Because I know there's a fee for parks in Lebanon.
And it's a, it's a significant number.
Yeah, it is.
Now, it might be, not, might, might not even be in their SDCs, but it's a lot of money.
And if you recall that our consultant indicated that they were currently working with Lebanon because Lebanon just updated their transportation plan and was going to be increasing their street plan as well. Remember that discussion? You don't know the last time they visited that.
Well, that's what we need to see there, five-year plans. Let's see where they're going and where they're at on them.
It sounds like Lebanon is working on there, so we may not, they may not be done when you need to make a decision.
So historically, what have they been doing? What is Brownsville doing? What is, you know, the others doing as well? So we kind of get the other info of what's going on there.
Well, even if you drop the fifth year, when I said seventeen-five, you just drop that fifth year out, fifteen thousand in four years. That's, that's not, that's only four thousand, not from Lebanon, and I would bet you by in four years, Lebanon will be up at fifteen. Because what's going on in Lebanon?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, we can revisit this anyway, every year? Or is that something we've got to go through this whole process again?
Me, you have to go through the whole process, is my understanding. Is that your?
I would believe if you go and add more projects and you want to change them, that you would have to go through that process.
Actually, Austin, Austin will probably have a better answer for us. But I think you don't just, this isn't something that you just get to change.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to change your whole formula and how you come to that number.
You have to put it in your methodology and then your methodology gets quicker for you. We do the hearing and then that process is all adopted.
But if I'm not mistaken, we do not have to raise it. Is that true?
If you want to leave them alone right now, you can do that.
No, 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 I'm talking about when we, when we've come with a number here of four years or whatever it is. And let's say year three, we don't, we don't have to raise it, do we?
The whole, as I understand, the entire purpose of this process, I'm going to compare it to our land use process. The whole point is you set the rules to the game before you start to play. So what I would advise is that you make a decision of what you want to do now during this process. I'm not saying it has to be tonight. But I'm saying before we go out and finalize this, we need to, I, I would highly suggest that we have those decisions all made in this process. You start going through and changing the rules as you go and I think that's when you start running into trouble. So if, if we want to adjust some of the process, what we would do is adjust the projects that we're forecasting, we would which, which should be tied into the CIP and so there's a whole lot of it's a, it's a, it's baking, it's not cooking. It's, you put it in and it's, it's a reaction. So that's, yeah. So baking is science, cooking is not so much. We're, we're trying to bake here and you got to hit all the ingredients just right. If you don't, you don't get to cover it up. It's baked and it's done. You got to throw it out and start over, I, I think is how I would understand the process.
Well, when we were, when, excuse me, when we were in the meeting and I, you think you were with us, maybe me too, Susan, did you go to the SDC meeting? Did I not understand that Grants Pass had the option of not doing that at all? Maybe it was just on, on individual pieces, like a, a building or something that was going into town. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. But I think I remember that they were able to just say, no, we're not going to charge this SDC. And it might have been on an individual thing. I, it might have been.
As part of economic development, you would have the option of if, if a company comes in and says they want to locate in St. John's, but what can you do? You have the ability to negotiate
Okay.
fees with them at any time.
Okay.
And that's what Lebanon did in several different facets of what they
I wonder why.
What you set, when you make your decision and how you set these fees and how we're going to phase them and what that dollar amount through this process is going to get solidified in, in your, in your process when we get to that point in the hearing. Fifty days, ninety days. So if, once we set that, then it's kind of makes it, you kind of have to start the process over a little bit, reset it and then make the hearing again.
So if we set a five-year plan, we would want to revisit it in four years, right? To look forward again.
You can look at it anytime you want. But the whole, the
You could set a CPI in your
Right.
unless your projects change, you could, out of the gate, set a CPI and every year it's going to incrementally increase to match the CPI. But you're, we're talking about phasing right now.
Yeah.
So
So what you're talking about is in five years, if we didn't get the projects done that we're using to calculate if let's say we explode, right? I mean, honestly, we're about the only community with the amount of land that we have from Portland down to at least Eugene. We may explode and maybe we get through all these projects and if all these projects are getting done as we're growing so fast, then yeah, we'd have to go back and look at the, at the methodology and whatnot. So it's, so yes, yes and no, maybe, but you might be able to look at them and say, yeah, we're fine. The, the fund is healthy and we're kicking things off and
Even if, even if you don't establish the five year at seventeen-five, let's go back to numbers. First year seventy-five hundred, you're still under Lebanon. Second year ten thousand, you're still under Lebanon. Third year twelve-five, you're definitely going to be either Lebanon or under Lebanon. And if you do fifteen, you're within still proximity of Lebanon. And I imagine Lebanon will be there. So I think if you just stick to a four, you're still going to be within comparable to Lebanon.
So Counselor, ideally what would happen is we're doing all of them at once. Ideally what would happen is we're going to update our transportation master plan. And then now, once we update that and we know what we're going to do, then we would tackle that one, that SDC with the new plan. And then as we redo all of our comp plans, which you know, you do on five-ish year cycles, each piece of the SDC would be caught up. Normally, I don't think it's, you do all of them at once like this. Unless you're going to mess with your methodology, if that makes sense. But the idea is you develop the methodology and then you can just plug in numbers as projects and time goes along. Kind of like the magic spreadsheet we use for water sewer. It's all set, you just plug in budget numbers and then it figures it out for you. That's what I think is what we're trying to work for. for.
Well, Mr. Mayor, no matter what the number is the first year, it's gonna be a lot more money than we're charging right now. No matter if it's five thousand dollars, if it's seventy-five hundred dollars. It's a big jump. It's a huge jump. And, and, but like I said, we have been in the, in the dark for so many years that we could have been doing so many more. And I understand the former stuff going on. I understand that. But at some point, we, we need to get our stuff, our infrastructure and stuff done. And this is one way we can do it.
And you need to add rates, SDCs, and you know how our rates have been. So you've had that discussion over and over.
Yeah.
And yeah, if you have adequate SDCs, then you're not plugging all your projects into the user rates.
We're dead.
Right.
Yep, exactly. Thoughts to some of the other counselors? What's your thoughts?
Well, I mean, sit and look at all these other people. I think we need to make our own path instead of worrying about what they're doing. You know, I mean, we got things we need to get done, and we need to head on and move forward instead of comparing ourselves to everybody else. Lead the pack.
I agree with you. I think we need to give a reason why they want to come to Sweet Home, not, you know, other than.
They've got a good reason now.
Yeah, I mean, the Portland are gonna stand in line here pretty next month.
Yeah. And we're gonna miss, we're gonna, excuse me, we're gonna miss a bunch of this because we're gonna be sixty or ninety days out before this even goes into, into effect. Or whenever it is. I don't know. It's gonna be after the first year, probably.
Again, if everybody, if every developer who has come and inquired, and I would call them serious inquiries, we're looking at two-hundred-and-fifty units are, are in the pipeline right now. Again, we're one of the few places that have land that's not.
And you've got two apartment complexes that are huge that's in the, in the pipeline.
Yeah. We've, we have oftentimes that developers come in and they're, well, you gotta help us with SDCs. And we look at it and say, eighteen hundred dollars sound okay?
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're used to paying them. Absolutely. Again, again, you're elected to make decisions, and this is why you guys get paid the big money. It's, it's, we gotta find that balance of, I know, of what is gonna be still in place into builders, yet still meet the needs of the community. And there's, there's a balance in there. And that's why you guys are elected.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, I, I blame, I blame the mayor for not bringing this up five years ago. That's just my opinion. Well, I think for, for me personally, I'd like to have it be the four-year. The five-year's fine. That's whatever you guys decide. I'll go along with that. But I think we should start at a bigger number than fifty-eight hundred dollars. That's just my opinion.
We started at fifty percent and then increased it beyond that after the four years. If all these people are coming in, we got a million reasons around here why, with all the trees and lakes and everything else. I mean, people come here because it's peaceful. As long as they don't come here and try and start a bunch of crap, then we'll be all right.
Is James not in the picture anymore? Oh, no, there he is.
James, you hear us? What's your thought, James?
I, I like the four-year quite a bit. But I do also like what Counselor Nash said. Let's just bump it up fifty percent and start from there.
Fifty percent of the what current right now? It'd be four thousand.
Well, it's gonna what it's gonna max out at.
Oh, fifty percent of the max out.
I, I really do like that. I mean, we need to bump it up to something. That's obvious. But, but I don't know. Either way is fine. I like Counselor Nash's idea, and I like the four-year increase too. But I think we should start out a little higher.
I'm not in favor of going to nine thousand dollars the first year. I think the seventy-five hundred you talked about is possible.
I'm, I'm not for nine thousand either.
And the four, and the.
I'm sorry.
Which is what the fifty percent would be. And the four-years is fine. I, you know.
I like the four-years, and I, I, I'm kind of, I have to agree. I think you go in anything above seventy-five hundred the first year, you're getting pretty darn aggressive. But I like the four-year.
At the end of the fourth, fourth year, where would we be?
That's something that the rest of the council, you wanna be fifteen or seventeen, five? That's up to you.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Well, Counselor Gold, where you think the ma- the ceiling should be in four years?
Well, all the way things are going, probably seventeen, five. Where did you hear that about?
Got all these people wanting to leave the big cities, and they're gonna be coming to these smaller towns. So if you wanna be here, make it work.
So can we?
I do want to say that, you know, we gotta keep in mind too, we still want people to come here. And if we get our, our SDC so high that, you know, everything just get wrapped into, people trying to buy a home, and then we won't have affordable housing because it costs so much for them to build a house. Ben's a prime example of that.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, do we need to decide on the four-year thing plan and then numbers? Or should we?
I think we should do, we, I think, is there any agreement for four years? Okay, so we got four years in agreement. So now we just need to decide what was ceiling in the four years. What ceiling do you, do you think we ought to be? Fifteen or seventeen, five?
I prefer the fifteen number.
Let's split the difference.
What number?
I prefer the fifteen number. And Counselor Nash said we should split the difference at sixteen. I prefer the fifteen.
I wish it was higher, but I can, I can go along with fifteen too.
Better than where we're at.
Yes, yep.
Don't feel greedy.
Well, I'm not saying that we, that it's, wouldn't be acceptable. I mean, I think that the seventeen-five number is not ridiculous. But we are in a situation where we could, we can make it, I don't wanna say easier, but maybe more sellable.
I'm kind of for the fifteen too. I think seventeen-five is a little aggressive, not knowing what the other communities are gonna do.
So just, I'm thinking in my head, Matt.
Not counting the accelerator that you were talking about.
And Ray, would you, would you mind letting everybody know that could be on here? Maybe there's nobody, but what that, that accelerator is going to be? Is it like CPI? Is it three percent? Or what do?
I think you guys get to pick that. Why don't you bring in Austin? Austin, are you here with us?
Hi. Sorry, I was having some audio issues earlier. I wanted to jump in and help out with the, the council had. And just wanted to let you know that you can implement some of the SDCs now and others later. So you could choose not to implement parks if you wanted to. It doesn't, it's not necessarily completely tied back to the project list and having to go back through the methodology. You could also look at increasing a portion percentage each year, like you, like the graph Ray was showing and is showing now. Both of those are, are acceptable methods. So back to the inflationary adjustment factor. Engineering News Record, ENR, is most commonly used for this, and it tracks, you can either choose to use Seattle's ENR percentage number or the twenty-year, or, sorry, twenty-city average. National is a national number. And you can also use CPI. That's a little less common than using the ENR method, but is also acceptable.
So Austin, are you saying that if we choose, for instance, not to accept putting parks into this at this point in time, we can add them in later?
Yes, that's correct. You could implement some now and then add, add the others in later, as you said.
Okay, can those, can those percentages, if we adopt this, are those percentages locked in?
No, they would be tied to the methodology and then back to the ordinance that goes with the methodology. And so. The ordinance.
I kind of, in my opinion, I think we need to keep parks in.
Oh, I'm not saying take them out. I just would say as a hypothetical, I'm not saying take them out. That's not what I was asking.
I think you wanna keep your complete infrastructure in place during this methodology.
So I wanna make sure, you're, you're saying that the CPI is what we would normally use for the, the extra typically?
No, sir. That would be the ENR, Engineering News Record.
Okay.
It's a factor. It's, it's just a percentage that tracks inflation across the construction industry specifically, not just the Consumer Price Index.
Do you have any idea what the history of that's been the last few years?
Oh, it's kind of been all over the place. We use them for cost estimating all the time. And it depends on what city you look at, or if you look at the national average. But, you know, it could be as much as five to seven percent. It could be as low as one percent. It really depends on the economy and what's being built.
Well, whatever it is, it is. So do we have a consensus on the four-year thing?
I think we, you know, four years is our consensus for sure.
So now we have to deal with the.
I think a consensus is given probably around fifteen in the four years, maxed out.
We can revisit it later.
We'll visit it later and then maybe put in the CPI. Sorry, Ray.
Just to give you some context, if a brand-new home is built, and let's say it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, the difference between the fifteen and the seventeen-five is point one percent of that cost.
Is everybody on board with that?
I don't.
Not on what? Not the accelerator?
I'm gonna leave it at fifteen.
Well, that's what, yeah, I mean, we're talking about fifteen, but I'm talking about, you were asking about the CPI, right? If we wanted to add that on to this? Sorry.
Excuse me. Austin, is that an answer that you're looking for right now?
He's on mute.
We're gonna have to answer right this second.
So four-year and fifteen ceiling, however that's structured.
Austin, does that give you what you need to go forward?
Sorry. Yes, it does. As long as the methodology, methodology is the big, big thing at this point. It seems like everybody's okay with that, and it's, it's set. That would be the major change now. But I think the, the phasing and the, you know, what cost index you're gonna use to escalate the yearly rates, that can all be determined prior to the ninety-day period to present the preliminary findings and give the public notice. So that's when that would need to be decided. Bye.
Okay. So Austin has a couple of slides to go through. Austin, are you ready for that?
Yes, sir. So we've already covered a lot of this with Ray's thoughts. We've already talked through a lot of this. So this'll just be kind of food for thought. Some policy considerations. I know we've talked about parks being included for commercial, non-residential. And the way the methodology is written right now, it is not including that. It would be approximately a six percent decrease per person if we took out, or if we didn't go with commercial. So it's really not, it's not looking at a, a lot of money there for that exemption. There's the affordable housing exemptions that you'll have to discuss and make a decision on, the amount, how much, and who's eligible for that. And that would just be a, a way of kind of relieving the SDCs for affordable housing that wants to come to town if you so desire. Another one, just an example, is, so the stormwater SDCs assume that all the rainwater that rains on a certain property makes it into the city's stormwater system. So an exemption could be, hey, if you've got a detention facility or homeowner, if you take your storm, rain from your roof and send it into the ground for infiltration, you could give a discount to your stormwater SDC for that. It's just an option, something to consider. Another one is the developer credits, the value of the credit, whether this is just the improvement fee or the total fee. And what makes up the total fee is the improvement fee, the reimbursement fee, and then the compliance fee. So by law, you're, you're required to provide a credit for any improvement that a developer makes that is on your CIP list. But the other fees, credits can be added at your discretion. And then there's also the transferability of that credit from developer to developer. It's pretty common that they are allowed to be transferred. That's just another easy or quick policy decision you'll have to make. So. Just phasing options. We talked about this earlier. Ray talked about it. You can choose to implement some of the SDCs now and some later. And you could also do a portion, which you guys are talking about. That's exactly the, the method that, that sounds like you're going over the four years, this amount per year. And then we talked about inflation using that ENR number or the CPI number for inflation on a year-to-year basis. So back to the CIP project list Ray touched on earlier. We can add or subtract projects. If the project costs are, exceed the SDC amount, then we will have to go back through the process to alert the public, give them a thirty-day notice before that, that increase happens. And you're not required to do anything unless somebody requests a public hearing within seven days of your notice. One click, Ray? This council is saying thirty-day notice, public hearing only if somebody requests council action. And then back to the inflationary adjustments. They do not require hearing. We can include it in the methodology and as a separate resolution, and then it'll just happen year after year based on how you set it up. So here's a schedule we put together to avoid having the public hearing, public approval hearing right before Christmas. We look at the timeline right now. The earliest we could do this would be December twenty-first. So we're at the September third council work session. We've kind of targeted the October fourteenth workshop or council meeting to present the preliminary findings and give the public notice. And that kicks off the ninety-day period. That's an important period to realize that nothing's gonna happen in this timeframe. This is when your stakeholders get involved, your developers, and they have a chance to comment and say, hey, these fees are too high, or here's an issue I have with that. And then thirty days after October fourteenth is when Deb Galardi, our subconsultant, will have the methodology report available. And so that has a sixty-day review period to the public hearing to approve the SDCs. So this timeline, it's, it's, it's pretty rigid with the sixty and ninety days, but it's flexible outside of that. So you could, you could decide to implement these as soon as possible and then have to have a special hearing. I think it was December twenty-first, right before Christmas. Or you could delay to the first meeting in January. Or you could delay to the first meeting in January or even later if you would like. I think that's it, Ray. If you guys have any questions, please ask away.
Questions of counselors?
So the last day is on the 21st of December? That, that's an important day?
Well, that's.
Go ahead.
That was the fastest you could get to it. Looking at the timeline now, it's not going to happen any faster than that.
Yeah, that's Christmas week, so that might be a little bit of an issue.
Right, that's why we bumped it out a little bit.
And we probably won't have council that week either, maybe, I don't know. We'll have to figure that out later, but okay, that's good.
Any questions? Counselor Gold, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good with what you guys said. I'm not going to complain or squabble over the other four-year 15,000 thing. So I'm fine with everything else.
Okay. Thanks, Austin.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You got everything you need there, Ray?
He's already got two pages.
Just start with the second page.
No.
Uh, no, we'll put all that together in a spreadsheet and get it out to you so you can kind of see what that would look like.
So are we settled on the bottom number to start with?
Well, it'll be whatever you actually come up with.
Yeah, so.
Bottom number, but.
Consensus was 15,000 would be the cap and then we would divide that out over four years.
Okay. As long as it starts with 7,500. Whoa, I don't believe we're kidding. I'm just messing with you. 500, 200.
Okay, there's nothing else for the counselors? We will go ahead and adjourn our special meeting at 6:20.